Staffing. We had a presentation earlier this year from Chief Smith regarding police staffing. And the next phase was to do fire staffing. We gave Chief Stanley a few months to get his feet wet in his new position and also to find his tie, which he chose to bring today. Hasn't had it since his interview, I don't think.
That's all right. I like that casual.
So the chief's here to just do a brief introduction of our guest today.
I will keep my remarks very brief so we can move into the topic at hand. And we want to make sure we have a lot of time at the end for you to ask questions and for us to be able to provide any more detail that you need. But would just like to take this opportunity to say thank you and how much on behalf of the Fire Department, we appreciate council's vision for our future and identifying that we do have some operational and staffing challenges that we are encountering now and will need to address for the next coming decades to meet the changing needs of the population and the growth of the population. So we appreciate the importance that the public safety has in the strategic plan and being able to work with Matrix Consulting to find out some recommendations for what's best for our community and for our citizens. So, thank you for that. With no further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Robert Finn, who has been the lead project manager on this. And he's got a brief presentation for you. And then, like I said, we should be able to segue into questions. So, Robert?
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Finn, Senior Manager with Matrix Consulting, and I was the lead analyst on this study. Normally, Rich Brady does these presentations, but he's in Portugal on honeymoon, so.
Portugal.
I'm a good stunt double. So just to kind of refresh the council on what the study objectives were. It was to document the workloads and service levels of the Fire Department, assess the current staffing and service delivery, evaluate the management of the operations, and then to develop an assessment of the project staffing needs in the department, both to meet current needs as well as projections for future growth in the community. While conducting this study, we did, we received extensive input from Fire Department and city personnel through face-to-face interviews. We collected a lot of data from the department and the city to allow us to fully understand the staff utilization, the operations, and the management of this, of the department. Coordinated with the city planning to understand what the development plans and growth trends potentially are for the, for the city moving forward, and then conducted detail analysis of the current and projected staffing leads, and worked with the department throughout the process to ensure that they reviewed our findings to make sure that they were factual, any assumptions that we were going to use for projections moving forward, and then, and then the analysis. So that led us to the draft and ultimately the final project report. When we looked at their calls for service and in fire service evaluations, the accreditation protocols to look at three years of service delivery, calls for service, and performance to develop baseline standards for what the current service levels are. And then that allows you to compare them against the industry benchmark standards to see if you fall somewhere between what baseline expectations and benchmark performance are. So you can see you're, you're not dissimilar from many communities. Somewhere around mid-morning, 9:00, 10:00 a.m., their calls for service peak, and they go through pretty late into evening, 9:00 p.m. before, in the overnight hours, things start slowing down, which you can expect where, in a community where it's, there's a lot of residential, you know, when the people go to sleep, the call volume drops. In terms of their calls for service, most of their calls are EMS-related. So the top calls were medical calls, response, that's just over 75%. Alarm activations were second at 5.4%. And then the non-emergency transfers between medical facilities were just under 5%. So if you look at the emergency medical calls as well as the transfer calls, it's about 80% of their total call volume over the three-year period. When we looked at operations, the response times are one of the important indicators of how effective they're being. And there's three components to response times in a fire and EMS service delivery. The first one is call processing. So that's the time the dispatcher receives the call until they notify the fire EMS units of the call and allow them to begin the response. So the industry standard is 64 seconds, and currently, the county is performing at 33 seconds, which is well above industry standards. Turnout times are above industry standards with turnout times of 2 minutes and 31 seconds for fire, 2 minutes and 16 for EMS versus the benchmarks of a minute 20 for fire and a minute for EMS. So you can see there's some room for improvement in terms of how quickly the fire and EMS personnel get up, get to their apparatus and begin their response to the emergency calls. Travel times are also above what's expected for urbanized areas at 7 minutes and 12 seconds versus the benchmark of 5 minutes and 12 seconds. Same was true in the rural areas where you were 17 minutes and 15 seconds versus the standard of 13 minutes. And as we'll talk, the big factor, as you'll read in the report, that was driving that was, was the issue of call concurrence and the transfers. So, so when they go on these transfers and they're driving over 50 miles to the other medical facility, the, often the EMS units were out for three hours or more making those transfers. So that's three hours where another station is having to pick up the calls. So that elongates the emergency response times because no longer is somebody responding from the station they're supposed to be responding to, to their area. It's somebody coming in and filling in from the other areas of town. So, so call concurrence was, was a big issue since you have such a small compacting area of where, where the heavy call demand is, and it coincides directly with when the inter-facility transfers occurred. When we looked at those transfers, the cost for the city to provide those exceeds the revenue you're generating. So it costs about $1,400 per transfer, and the collection rate is about $304. So you're losing roughly $1,100 per transfer or $500,000 a year for providing that service.
Was it at all broken down for Medicare patients versus paid, I guess, insurance citizens? Medicare hasn't gone up in a long time, so.
Yeah. And, and you're always going to recoup less on the Medicare calls, but the data didn't have that broken down. It was just.
Just curious.
What did they bill versus what did they collect?
Sure.
But we know from our billing data that only 12% of our customer patient base is fully covered by insurance. Everybody else is Medicare or the pleasant term of private pay, which means no insurance.
Okay.
So when we looked at the recommendations for improvements in the operation, having the department establish those baseline performance objectives we recommended so that they can start to measure especially the, the two key controllable factors, which are the call processing and turnout times, and make sure that they're able to improve the performance in those areas. Because if you call 911, you don't know what's happening in the background. You only know that you dialed 911 at 5 o'clock and nobody showed up till 5:07. So if they can cut a minute off those turnout times, all of a sudden, they're showing up at 5:06. And with, with no cost, the system improves only because they're, they're measuring and, and holding personnel accountable for that. So we, we talked about installing timers in the station so the crews can actually realize their, their performance and see, see the clock ticking. And I know that's something the chief is, is moving forward on. We also thought discontinuing the inter-facility transfer program and shifting that to private EMS would, would benefit the city for a number of reasons. One, it's, it's costing you more than, than you're recouping. Two, if you continue with it, you really need to add another peak time ambulance to help offset the, the impact to the system during those, those peak call times, middle of the day, that 12 hours one from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. when the peak call times are happening. And, and most of the transfers occur so that you've got a unit in the city that can start to do some backfilling and move to the stations that are being impacted by that. And, and second is, it's really not core to the mission of, of the Fire Department. You know, Fire Departments are established for emergency response. And, and while this is a nice service, it's really not part of their core mission. It's really something the hospitals should be responsible for ensuring gets done. And if, if they're going to use you as that service provider, they should compensate accordingly so that the taxpayers aren't funding that service. Relocating the Quint from Station 14 to Station 15 will get it more in line where, with where the multi-story development is occurring in the city as, as there's redevelopment. That's going to require four additional full-time firefighters to ensure that there's a minimum of staffing of three firefighters on that apparatus every day. You really don't want to staff an aerial apparatus with less than, than three firefighters. And that does two things in terms of your service delivery. One, it improves the initial response force so that they're able to be effective when they get on scene. And two, it improves your ability to form an effective response force to handle all those tasks that are in the report that have to be done on, on working fires. So staffing those positions is a, about a $331,000 annual impact to the budget. Kind of longer term is, is a new station in the area of West 20th Avenue and Clairville Road. So when we're talking with planning, there's, there's talk of annexations in that area. Right now, it's rural. There's no need for a station. But as the population grows and it develops after annexation, if you get a population density of, of 1,000 or more people per square mile, that's, that's the time to start planning for the, for the station in that area because you'll, you'll start to see the impact and the need for those services. Fire prevention, currently, your inspectors are inspecting storage tanks, which is really a responsibility to the state. It's, it's pulling them away from the mandated inspections of public buildings and places of employment that they need to be doing, which then will impact their ability to meet that 15-month target for inspecting all commercial and, and places of employment in the city. So getting that transferred back to the state who's, who's legally responsible to provide that service and focusing the inspector's attention on, on your commercial buildings will improve their ability to meet that 15-month deadline and delay the, the need to spend money for an additional inspector because the timelines can't be met. The state has recently changed the training programs. So, so twofold. One is conducting a review to make sure that the, the training plan meets all the newly adopted state required training. And then two is to acquire a learning management solution to ensure that they're able to document and clearly record the types of training that they're doing. My understanding is they, they're in the process of acquiring that now, and, and they plan on getting that implemented this year. So that's good for two things. One, it's, it's good because it ensures you're complying with the state. But then two, training is a, is a large impact on your ISO score for the community. So when, when you've got that kind of system in place and you're able to clearly show that you're doing the required evolutions and the required training, they get you ISO points, you'll be able to maximize your, your score for training in, in the insurance arena. Right now, the fire personnel leave the city to conduct their training evolutions. They go up to the Technical College north of here. So longer term, again, looking at developing that property, 221 North Sawyer, to, to minimize the amount of time they have to spend out of the city conducting training or bringing crews in on overtime because they have to continue to staff emergency operations would benefit you. But again, that's got a cost and phasing in that type of center overtime would be probably the, the best, best way for the council to plan for it. So most critical training props first, and then, and then longer term, building in the others.
And the one thing that goes along with that, this isn't Robert's issue because he's talking about fire. We have many departmental tenants in that building, so it would also necessitate us finding an alternate location. They don't need anything as, as fortified as, as the training center is. It's an old armory. It can serve the training center very well. But we do have museum, facilities, clerk's office, police, so at least in traffic. So we have five different divisions or departments that are currently using that facility. So it would need to be probably no more than like a pole type of building because it's not, doesn't require any big, heavy structure. But that, it's not just a matter of saying, okay, Fire Department, move in. We have to displace five different divisions. So I just want that, make that, you know, that, that's the second or the accompanying part of, of this recommendation. Mary, you were going to ask a question or?
Oh, no. Just I thought there was also some discussion about potential need for a tower as well.
The tower is actually in the 2020 CIP. So we're, we're, we're getting started with that with the tower and figuring the tower will need a partner in, in a training center. But that's a little higher price tag.
So when we looked at the organization of the department and, and the lines of authority, in conducting the interviews, there was some confusion due to spans of control and, and the number of ancillary duties that many of the, the chiefs are having to do today on, on who reported to who. So clearing up the lines of authority by, by getting all the chiefs as deputy chiefs over specific areas, improving the spans of control and making sure the right people are reporting to the right deputy chiefs will, will go a long way. Bumping them up to the deputy chief level and getting everybody on the same level, about $119,154 annual for the increased salaries for the people that need to be bumped up. In line with that was the limited administrative support. So you've got one civilian position in the Fire Department providing administrative support. So that means the chiefs, the deputy chiefs, the battalion chiefs, they're all having to make their own copies, file their own documents, and really do things that will be better delegated to a civilian that's at a lower cost than, than their position to free them up to, again, be more long-term strategic thinkers and focused on, on the critical core operations of the department instead of clerical administrative functions. So adding an analyst position to assist with, with those functions, and then later, an administrative assistant position to, to help with the clerical functions would go a long way. And streamlining the operations of the Fire Department to make sure that, that, you know, you don't have expensive labor doing things that are better suited for, for a civilian person that, that would be at a low less, much less cost structure. As you guys know, the, the emergency communications are provided to the city by Winnebago County Sheriff's Office. So when we're talking about those turnout times and response times, it's important for the Fire Department to have a collaborative working relationship with the dispatch center to try to get some technologies in place that can ultimately improve the response and, and their ability to serve the community. So installing alert, alerting systems in the fire stations so that they can be individually alerted and will improve turnout times because then when your tones go off, you know it's you, and you're not waiting to see which station's being dispatched to that call. So it gets the crews moving quicker because they know once the tones go off that they're being dispatched. Automated voice dispatching technology has been shown to improve call processing time and, and make it a lot more clear to the crews what type of calls they're, they're going on because it's, it's an automated steady voice and you don't have any human inflection and, and, you know, different dialects and, and different speech patterns in there. Installing the automatic vehicle locating technology. So what that does is it allows the dispatcher on duty to see where the units are. So if a EMS unit, for example, had just dropped a patient off at the hospital and was back in service, and, and they're driving to their station, but they're passing where a call just came in, they can dispatch that ambulance or that fire truck to the call because they're able to see real time where it is. And the CAD software predicts which unit is the closest in terms of traffic patterns and what the road networks are. So, so it tells the dispatcher which unit to pick by closest response, which would then also increase your, or decrease your travel times to emergency calls and, and help improve the customer's view of how quickly you're getting to calls. And, and with that, just establishing a worker between the dispatch center and the Fire Department to collaborate those service level improvements and, and get things implemented would be helpful. Fleet and facilities, when we looked at the, the fleet, it was clear that, that one mechanic wasn't able to service that fleet effectively to make sure it was reliable. There was a lot of services being outsourced. And then items that the mechanic thought they were capable of fixing that came back were slow and delayed in getting repairs done. So having clear supervision over, over the fire mechanics and, and being able to use more than one person by getting that in, in Public Works is going to be a great benefit to ensure the reliability of the fleet. And my understanding is the cities already acted on that, and that move's been made. So kudos to the chief. They're not letting any dust grow on the report. They're, they're implementing recommendations that, that don't have a cost impact that he's capable of implementing quickly. Likewise, you have a battalion chief responsible for the maintenance and repairs of the fire stations. And that's not the best use of somebody at that pay grade. They need to be focusing on chief-level work. So moving that to the Facility Maintenance Division would go a long way. In, in the calculations, it looks like there's the need for an additional full-time plus a .02, which according to the fleet manager, or facilities manager, they've got a .8. So a full-time and, and upgrade on the .8 to a, to a full-time would make sure that the, all the facilities can be maintained and maintained properly and timely. And on the same note, you, you've got facilities that need renovations. So they're, when they were built, they weren't set up for a diverse workforce of female firefighters and, and female EMS personnel. Health and safety concerns these days with, with the cancer initiatives in the fire service, making sure gears located separately, contaminated gear doesn't get on the fire trucks, and then just the general living conditions and upkeep of the stations. So there's a, a planned space needs analysis for the fire facilities coming up in 2020. That's something we think you guys should can continue to fund and continue to pursue. Because while we did a, a general assessment, definitely that deeper dive is something that's needed to move. So then you can get a, a nice implementation schedule of, okay, here's the most important station and the most important items and, and start to work on those through your capital improvement program. And then working with the county to relocate or rebuild the fire station at the airport, knowing that you're not responsible for that one, but it's, it's definitely in need of reconstruction. So in terms of the timeline, implementing the automatic vehicle locator and response timers, like I said, the Fire Department's working on that. The learning management system, they're working on discontinuing the tank inspection. So making notice to the state and getting all that worked out, and where the state can then assume that responsibility and take over, and then transferring fleet to Public Works, which has already occurred. So they're on a, on a good path right now to get all those implemented this year. Whoops, what in the world just happened?
Go back to slideshow.
Yeah, I don't know if this will do it. There we go. So in 2021.
We're still in 2020.
Oh, did I jump too far? Okay. So 2020, looking at adding those four full-time firefighters to staff the Quint and then get it relocated. Looking at the management analyst for the Fire Department, adding that maintenance person to Facilities Maintenance to allow the transfer of responsibility over to Facilities Management for maintenance of the fire facilities. Working on a timeline to discontinue providing the transfer services for area hospitals. Obviously, that's going to take some work between the city and the hospital administrators to, to make sure that that occurs seamlessly and, and it doesn't impact the hospitals or the city as that transition occurs. So, so that's going to be definitely an operational thing for the chief to focus on.
And just so the council's aware, the primary hospital that does the transfers is Aurora. And I've already spoken with Dr. Newman, just let him know. So he, he's not surprised by the recommendation. We, we told him about it last week, and I think Chief Stanley sent him a copy of the report so he could take a look at it. So that's out there because you'd hate to read about that or be watching this and see it. And Dr. Newman understands our predicament. And so we'll, we'll get working on that. But I wanted to let you know that.
So do you ever see in, in that situation, recommendations or more discussions taking place rather than discontinuing the transfer services, that the hospitals start maybe considering the payment in lieu of taxes to help offset that?
Yeah, it's, it's an option. So today, you're at about $500,000 a year off from, from what it costs you to run that service versus what, what you collect in revenues. So, and then there's the need for the extra EMS unit, peak time, if you're going to do that. So that, so then again, adding the cost of that unit in kind of gives you a good starting place for those types of discussions. Typically, hospitals are able to find private EMS companies that can do that as part of their.
More economically.
Yeah. Their, their cost structure's lower, one. And then two, the, the way they stage units and, and put them in likely areas allows, allows them a lot more flexibility for response to those, these types of things than a fixed facility emergency response provider like the Fire Department where, you know, that, so you'll, that's why you'll see ambulances sitting in a 7-Eleven parking lot or under a bridge or, because they're being sent by their dispatcher to post in the likely range of where the next call potentially is going to occur. So, so they're always moving their assets around. And then again, conducting that space utilization study that's already planned for. In 2021, the reorganization of command staff, hiring that additional administrative assistant, and then begin to plan for how the training center's going to develop and, and what the key items are for developing training center. And then beyond is continue to add any full-time equivalents, apparatus, or stations based on how you grow through annexation and how you grow through development. But knowing that nothing has to happen until those benchmarks or, or, you know, the triggers are reached and, and, you know, growth occurs. So, so just because you annex an area doesn't mean you need to build a fire station in the middle of a field. You can wait for development to follow. And then again, using that space utilization to plan how you're going to update and, and maintain your facilities moving forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, I kept us under 5:30.
On the management analysts, is it thought that that position would also do perhaps some fill-in grant writing type work as well?
Yeah, they would be able to pull a lot of the data that is required for the grant writing, you know, help to, to craft narratives and help to manage the grant. You know, they, yeah, the, you know, purchasing and acquisition and reporting of grant management, you know, is a big function as well. So they would be able to support that as well.
So other than obviously on the suggested in 2022, where you suggest some potential full-time additions based upon just needs of growth, it doesn't seem like there's much, at least identified in this in terms of need for rank and file or the crews themselves, the operators, and then at the, at the immediate point. Other than, it seems like upper ranks management staff need some readjusting and some recalibrating of some roles, it seems like.
So getting that Quint to four-person, or three-person staffing is, is important. But if you choose to do the discontinuation of the transfer program, you, you can almost look at that as you've just found staff. Because now, instead of going away for three hours and not being available to respond, now those personnel are in the city where they're supposed to be available for emergency response. So, so when, when that piece happens, then it's really about drilling down and seeing, okay, now what's that impact been to our, our travel times? Are we, are we still longer than we would want to be? Or did that correct it? Because now there's not as much call concurrence, there's not as many units being pulled from outside their response areas into other. outside their response areas into other response areas. You've got the vehicle locators, closest units are getting dispatched. So, those things all together wind up making it where you don't, you really get to delay having to add any additional personnel to meet your needs.
So, you know, that recommendation is add four new FTEs of firefighters. So, we'll keep up with attrition, plus add that other four, which is going to have a direct impact on the line staff because it's going to raise that staffing level and that capability level on that unit at Station 15 and also bring us to meet the minimum safety standards. So, we're going to make their jobs safer as well.
The below average response time, is that because of stations being maybe outgrown by an area where it's one station's driving up the averages or...
Now, what we were saying, it was because too often with the cross-staffing of apparatus and EMS units getting pulled outside the city, so they're not available to respond. So, if you have two transfers going at once, you've lost four personnel and now somebody else is having to respond longer distances across the city to make up the calls in those other areas. So, again, as you get closest unit response and now units aren't leaving town for hours and hours at a time, they're staying, you know, even though they may be responding to calls, but they're still inside the city limits and not 50-plus miles away.
So, if we didn't have the EMS service, we'd probably drive our average way down and be comparable.
Yeah, you'll probably see that you'll get a lot tighter to that five minutes and 12 seconds in the urbanized areas.
What we experience is both dominoing and leapfrogging. So, Station 14 goes out, then Station 15 has to cover 14, then 16 has to cover 15. You know, that's its own problem, but once you, all those dominos fall, now you've got Station 19 going through four different response areas to get to Station 14. So, the combination of those two drive those numbers through the roof like we're seeing now. You know, so one of the things you look at is the reliability of what is the chances that the engine or the apparatus assigned in that response area will be the one that actually responses, you know, pushes our reliability too low.
I have a question about the water supply discussion in here. Maybe this is a naive question, but I thought I may have heard or read something recently about some communities that don't rely on their treated water for the water supply and there's like a almost direct to the lake or river kind of supply. Is that the thing?
The quantity of water is not our issue, you know, that we've got, you know, a great water system here in the city. It's having the personnel to get that water out of the hydrant to the fire. You know, that's where we struggle. But, you know, having a lack of a water supply and, you know, being a municipal water system, you know, we're not in a rural area that doesn't have hydrants and we have to worry about bringing water to the scene. You know, we are very fortunate that way, you know, and that we've made a lot of improvements in the water system over the years in the city. You know, so now it's how do you get it from the tank, you know, from the fire hydrant through all the hoses and the fire engines onto that fire? And it takes a lot of apparatus and personnel to make that happen and that's where we're struggling.
So, I guess there'd be maybe a question for Mr. Roloff at this point. It looks like the study says four full-time entry-level firefighters along with two staff adds, so that's six employees with our budget where we're at processing. Has any figures been put into add personnel in the fire department at this point?
This will be presented as one of the enhancement packages that council regularly considers through the annual budget process. At this time, we're not planning to put it into the base budget. We still have to worry about expenditure restraint issues. So, Mr. Van Gompo and I, at the end of this week, beginning of next week, we'll be putting final touches. We're still waiting for revenues from the state, if you can believe that. But, once we get that, then it'll be an issue of identifying that. The costs that are in the study are pretty much, you know, from our standpoint, they're dead on with what we're looking for. But, how do you absorb? What's the number, Robert?
Well, it'd be... About 331,000.
331,000. So, I mean, that's...
Right. That's where I guess I'm coming from because obviously, having known staffing issues, it's important that we have that for our citizens and it's important for the firefighters themselves to have the appropriate staffing. And so, it is a priority issue, at least the four firefighters for sure. Maybe we can hold off a year or two on the other two or add one a year from that point on.
Well, you know, just to clarify...
Because if we, to go back to what he said too, though, if we work in agreement out with Aurora and Ascension to out-of-city transports, and maybe we still do to say Thea Clark, but we don't go to Milwaukee, we don't go to Madison, we don't go to maybe some of the other farther locations, because I know sometimes it's a patient request too to go to a different hospital. And what do you do then? Do you say no?
With the, I'll let the chief discuss the transfer issue, but the four firefighter fighters are recommended because you need four...
Right.
Positions just to staff one seat on the quint. So, that seat on the quint requires, you know, three-point, you know, it rounds to four very quickly, very easily. So, to implement one a year, that would be difficult.
No, I was thinking more of the administrative positions. The four firefighters, I think we need.
Yeah.
But, the two office staff could maybe be added one a year.
Those are things that we're going to have to take a look at.
And that's what we're proposing is that the second administrative assistant for the fire department would be requested in 2021, you know, so that we, because certainly Matrix and the fire department understand we can't get, ask for, you know, everything all at once. How do we stay within the constraints of city budgeting and levy limits and things like that? So, what you'll see as our enhancement package for 2020 is the four firefighters and the management analyst. We would add a lieutenant, full-time equivalent in 2021, and an administrative assistant we would request in 2021. So, we'd be asking for four firefighters, four uniform firefighters, one civilian in 2020, a uniform in 2021, and a civilian in 2021.
So, what you'll likely see in the budget will be two enhancement packages from fire. The first two bullets will be the both of those enhancement packages. So, you'll be able to see them, see the individual impact because, you know, I've told chief, chief knows this, but chief's being optimistic, you know, I can't make any promises and you can't make any promises, but we certainly want you to see what the impact is. You have 330,000 is about nine cents on the tax bill, just a good point of reference for you. The management analyst, probably, you know, probably two or three cents. So, those that, you know, that kind of plain speaks it so you understand the impact, but it's really, the whole issue has to do with expenditure restraint. And Mr. Van Gompo and I are looking at all sorts of different approaches that we can take to continue to comply with expenditure restraint law, yet give council the ability. If the public, as Deputy Mayor Herman's pointing out, the public's saying, yeah, this is something we really want, we have to figure out a way to make it happen within the confines of our rules that we need to follow.
As far as that, state inspection, would there be a cost to that, to have the state come in and do those tank inspections?
The state contracts with us currently and that contract expires at the end of this year.
Okay.
What also has taken place since we've done the study, some legislation changed in the past couple of weeks where we would be required, you know, the state is requiring fewer inspections as well, you know, so we're going to see a dramatic cut in what needs to be inspected.
Okay.
So, we'll reevaluate that of what does that workload look like now with those new requirements? But, this is a very timely point to potentially exit because our contract's ending.
Okay. Is that a negotiated contract or you get what the state gives you?
You get what the state gives you.
Okay.
Take it or leave it.
Which is nothing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anybody else? Okay.
So, one of the things is talking about a new station on 20th and Clairville, you know, because of the annexation. Was there a discussion between staff and fire as to when are we thinking? Like, are we thinking 10 years from now, 20 years from now, seven years from now? I mean, do we have an idea?
It's not date-specific and that's where Chief or Robert...
So, the trigger point is when the population density reaches over 1,000 people per square mile?
So, I guess obviously it's not something within the next five years, correct?
I would say no.
No.
I'd say you're correct. I mean...
Yeah, okay. So, what I would say though, which is something that I think current council could do is, you know, next year when we have a strategic plan, we should be looking at things that are 10, 15, and 20 years from now. Maybe it's not in our immediate strategic plan, but somehow figure out, like, you know, is there a fund in which when we're borrowing, should we be reserving funds for something like this?
Kind of like what we do with the public works?
Exactly. Like with the new public works building.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying next year's budget, but I think it should be something on the radar because when you take a look at what construction costs are right now, what does that mean to the taxpayer 10, 15, 20 years from now?
There's a limit on how early...
Interest rates.
There's a limit on how early we can borrow, but there are other methods that I think we can kick around. I think fortunately, because of the standard that Matrix has put out there, we're going to be able to track that density. That's a fairly easy thing to track and we'll see that train coming and we'll have a good amount of time, but there might be ways to even reserve fund balance. You know, people ask, oh, you know, what about our fund balance? We still have to maintain a fund balance, but right now, quite frankly, our fund balance is in better shape than other elements of our finances. So, we'd have to take a look at different things. With the public works garage we borrowed and then we came close to not complying with some borrowing requirements, our drawdown schedules and things like that. So, we have to make sure we do it right, but there's ways, there's ways we can look at that. But, saving for the rainy day, proverbial rainy day is something we need to do.
I think in order to save future councils, city managers, and finance directors, and fire chiefs and staff from pulling their hair out, you know, versus waiting until we're at a critical standpoint.
I'd say, gosh, we need it right now. Yeah, exactly.
It seems like it's kind of important to calculate as well. I know that we bill for services outside the city and that coverage area and even as we're adding increased density in the central city and there's more spread out development on the periphery, when we talk about there's no impact to services as we consider these developments, clearly we're starting to see some of that stretch. So, as we make those decisions and we ask, you know, what is the impact, it'd be important to look at that a little more closely.
Well, tips of, you recommend a couple improvements process-wise, basically, you know, trying to track turnout times, you know, different equipment in the stations, whether it's, you know, the clocks or the different automated messages, a couple of little things in here. Investment costs in those types of programs, including, you know, even learning, I know we're doing learning management already, but rough idea on investment costs for those types of, you know, system improvements that we can, it sounds like track and hopefully, you know, continuously improve upon.
That's very much scalable, you know, that the, just the timers in themselves, we think we can do, you know, relatively inexpensively. We've talked to some neighboring fire departments that have already done the same thing, you know, so that's something we can probably absorb in the budget. You know, as you're talking about some of their recommendations of station alerting and the automated voice dispatching and the technology that that takes, you know, could easily be $18,000 to $20,000 a station, you know, so could be for that new computer-aided dispatching link to talk to that, voice dispatching, you know, could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, you know, we're going to have to approach that with some scale and, you know, look at funding resources, you know, that we're experiencing, many of the problems we're experiencing, other fire departments in our area are experiencing. So, my colleagues and the other fire chiefs have been meeting, talking about how do we do this collaboratively so we have more purchasing power? How do we apply for federal grants, you know, to have more power within the grant application to address some of these issues? So, we've already been working for the past several months to try to move towards some of these solutions and really identify what is that solution and how do we fund it?
Okay.
I guess just one kind of housekeeping question. Maybe this is just a typo, but I noticed that on the front of the report, it says "final report," but the pages all say "draft" and we're missing some of the sources, the data source references. Is that yet to come, the final version of the report? I mean, it says "final," but...
Yeah, that was probably an oversight on the header, so, but Chief and I can work through it and make sure we get you the data sources and we can add that in and then do a final...
Maybe it's in the, maybe it's back in the back and I just can't see it.
No, it's not. No, we would reference in a footnote on the page.
Okay, thank you.
I would certainly encourage council members to contact Chief Stanley if you have any other questions. That, this is a lot to absorb and understanding some of the nuances of some of the other recommendations. I think they've highlighted the big ones. Obviously, anything that has a budget impact is going to be an immediate issue for council. But, I think we've begun the process. I think, you know, I want to compliment Mr. Robbie and his staff for working closely with Chief Stanley. The fleet issue is, has been implemented and it's working. And we learned a lot of things during the changeover and Chief Stanley, kudos to him for trusting Public Works and Public Works for following through on those promises. That's been working well. Council also gets a little credit. Last year, you added some staff, you added a staff to fleet in recognition that this was coming because there were more needs. And now we have those concentrated, Mr. Robbie has sent, how many? Two James, two mechanics to school to be specialists in fire apparatus in addition to the existing...
Two mechanics and supervisor.
So, we got the two mechanics and the supervisor plus the person we just transferred over. So, now you have four qualified people that can work on apparatus as opposed to one. So, that little change made a world of difference and those are the types of things we've got to be looking at. A lot of communication stuff that Chief Stanley will continue to work on. But, yeah, we'll be bringing budgets to you and that'll be, those will be the toughest decisions for council. But, I think this is, gives us a good framework, which I think was council's intent all along.
So, if I may, I'd like to thank Roberts and Matrix for all the work that they put into this. You know, they took a very deep dive into our operations and really spent a lot of time trying to find out what's best for our organization, what's best for our city. I'd like to thank my staff and all the rest of the city staff that contributed to this report. You know, a lot of hours were spent pulling data and doing interviews and then how responsive, you know, as a city we have been to trying to action on these items. You know, I would again thank council for having the vision to commission this study and direct for it to be done. I know we're missing a couple of council members this evening. I'll follow up with them to make sure that they get their reports and can get caught up on tonight's presentation and I'll also reach out to each of you individually to offer to schedule one-on-ones so that we can spend a little more time in this report and let you digest it some and answer some more questions.
Sounds good.
Very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.